Here, because the lawn goes this way.
All right, let's call a public hearing. Before we get going, though, I just want to note, the town report books are in a box to the back of the room. Feel free to grab them now, later. And let's begin the public hearing. This will be, again, on Article 3, the Town Meeting warrant, June 14th, 2016. Do you favor filing a petition for withdrawal with the Board of Directors of RSU 21 and with the Commissioner of Education, authorizing the withdrawal committee to expend $45,000 and authorizing the municipal officers to transfer the amount, not to exceed $45,000, from the town of Rundle's undesigned fund balance for this purpose? At this time, I would open the floor. Public comment, questions, remarks, concerns? Oh, we have a podium tonight. Sorry, I did not see that. Assistant Dean, if you would please...
Noel Holmes, of Town of Rundle. I have a question first, if that's okay, for Pete. In this month's Rundle Hour newsletter we just got this week, a repeated announcement was informing residents to attend this meeting tonight. To quote, "We will be able to question the petitioners as to the reason they feel withdrawal from the RSU 21 is appropriate." Have you contacted anybody from the petitioning group? Or has anybody requested they be here to answer questions?
I did this evening, Noel, but I sent you an email, a previous one, to advise you that folks would be asked the questions and if you had answers, if you could have them.
Okay. Wanted to ask that detail aside, I just want to make a brief statement on behalf of the petitioners and voters in this town who are in favor of the withdrawal from the RSU 21. We are all aware that the RSU 21 clearly wants to take middle and high school choice away from Rundle families and see that all our middle school and high school students attend the district schools of Kenwa. This was just the catalyst that reopened the debate of withdrawal and as a continuation of the first attempt of withdrawal in 2012 that was narrowly defeated thanks to unkept promises made by the RSU. This is just one example of decisions made by the RSU School Board that has negatively affected our town. This is not to say that the RSU 21 has not done some good to the MLDA school, its staff, and other needed upgrades. However, it is easier to highlight the good and forget about the bad. Furthermore, the ongoing positive and negative report that the RSU has built with this town are reasons it is divided on this issue now. If this petition question passes the vote on June 14th, which, again, is not withdrawal, but just a second step in a 22-step process, to spend some, and most likely not all, the entire $45,000 appropriate, you get this divisive question answered by qualified third party and not by information from the RSU 21 or inaccurate information and propaganda circulated by its supporters, we believe is well worth it. Finally, the financial information being given to the public by RSU supporters cannot possibly be accurate because much of the information needed is, in fact, derived from the analysis and cost and benefits. And just as importantly, the negotiation between this town and the RSU is what would take back from the RSU what we will own. Questions should not be the appropriateness of the withdrawal petition, but how is not appropriate to sit idle while the RSU 21 gives Rundle no voice and no control? Thank you.
Anybody else want to call it?
I have a question to the speaker before...
Can you hold it and maybe we listen to Jack?
I think Jack's going to make a presentation. All right, please.
Go ahead.
You want to make a presentation, Jack?
I am.
Do you mind just saying, cut some fun here and ask a question?
Just one quick question. I wonder if, Noel, if you could give us a specific example of inaccurate numbers that you say are the root of your petition.
I'm not here to debate numbers with the opposition. I'm just here to make a statement and let the numbers work themselves out.
You made a statement and you said that the three people who are against withdrawal were using inaccurate and biased numbers. I just want an example of one of those, please, or two.
Okay. Just based on the flyer that I received in the mail from, I'm assuming, Opposition of Withdrawal, the numbers stated in here, the fact is, yes, we have 13% of the RSU budget, 10% of new debt, while we have 22% of the students. The only factual numbers I see in there. That our tax burden will increase 35% to 40%, and that we will owe a full $11.1 million is inaccurate. Those numbers won't be determined without negotiations and without an analysis by a third party. These are numbers taken from, you know, financial information given by the RSU, so I guess the source is not the answer.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks. Sorry, Jack.
All right, there's another question.
Actually, just a quick rebuttal. The numbers are going to come from the school district or the person who conducts the analysis. Those are the only places numbers can come from. They're not magically made up.
No, I think an analysis done by a qualified third party that had been done in many other towns since 2012 is going to show that what the RSU deems they should be spending money on aren't necessarily what the schools need. Those numbers, again, can change and will.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Jack Reitz. I'm also a resident of Kony, about a third-year drive. I think I can go fairly long the way in addressing the concerns that were just mentioned. I'd like to make a couple terrifying points first. A statement was made that the intent is to remove all students from both middle school and the high school. I would like to correct that. State law says that high schools and students, everyone who had a choice, must state law changes. That is to be changed. Let me move on now. Recent letters to the editor have made calls for initiating this 22-step withdrawal petition, in conjunction with spending of $45,000 to complete this long, drawn-out process. The same letters to the editor also call for spending part of the money to estimate the cost to taxpayers if a rural ward were to withdraw. That's what a yes vote triggers, June 14th. It doesn't trigger just a financial analysis. It triggers the whole 22-step process. There is no turning back, period. That's what the law says. About a month ago, I stood before you and recounted my many years working on both the school and municipal board budgets, budget committees. This period's down from before the TAMS contract was even initiated, through the consolidation, and currently up to the, now the end of the TAMS contract. I won't bore you with all the details at that time. As you may recall, I provided you with a fairly detailed analysis of the 11 RSU 21 warrant articles proposed at that time. I estimated a cost increase of about $2 million, $2.1 million, to run with taxpayers if a rural withdrawal is from RSU 21. Each of the next 20 years, by the way. Wow, did that bring out a small, a vocal, heavy, pompous crowd. Since then, letters to the editor complain that these estimates are just doom, gloom, proclamations, misleading numbers, biased, false claims. Biased? Yes, I am biased. I'm biased toward providing our rural taxpayers with the best possible and most accurate information I can possibly give them. I stood by that estimate then, and standing by it now. Going down that withdrawal path is pure and simple, festival insanity for the town of Rundle. Tonight, I'm going to try and convince you, everybody here, that you don't want to stand anywhere near that withdrawal. The RSU 21 budget is complete and approved now. It's completed a week ago, approved a week ago. I'll provide you with the hard numbers, the real numbers, the solid numbers. I'm standing before you tonight, reputation in hand, arguing that these numbers accurately do the same, get into the same $2 million cost increase ballpark that we projected a month ago. It's up to you to decide, June 14th. John, if you could, you have that slide up. I'll try not to put this in anybody's eye here, but let me go over two slides. It's a little bit difficult to see, but in the upper right-hand corner there are three things. As mentioned, it's true that Rundle has 22% of the kids we pay. Our valuation in the three communities is 10% of the three-town total, and our share of the budget is 13%. I've simplified the data from the last time that I presented this into just two components. Looking up here at operating costs. I have consolidated nine of the 11 warrant articles into that one line. And what I'm estimating from the, I've done it from the individual nine, but the sum of them all indicates that approximately $400,000 would be the increase right here from those nine costs. That doesn't begin to tell us what the heavy hitters are: special education and tuition. As you may or may not be able to see on the slide, I'm showing $1 million as the cost of special education today. I'm going to be up to that number. The total cost of special ed in the district is just over $7 million. That's simply 13% of this, okay? You go to the next link column, and I show $2 million as the cost of the withdrawal. That simply assumes that we have 22% of the kids. We have about 22% of the special ed needs in the district. Just that sum. That adds up to about $1.7 million. In addition to that, I have a contingency of one out-of-state child who... If you have that situation in your town, and every special ed director budgets for this are out of state, that's $300,000. That's how I got to $2 million for a $1 million increase. Now, let me talk about tuition. That's the heaviest hitter, and I'm showing $370,000 there. A very large number, 3.26 million. How do you come to the world to get from $370,000 to over $3 million I withdrawn? Well, I'm going to talk about that in just a minute. I just want to finish up the town by withdrawing. You would receive estate funding of almost $3 million, and that decreases the cost a bit. By the same token, you're still about $1.3 million operating cost loan of today's costs to our town. The new debt that I've shown are indeed estimates. That's probably the softest number. You have a brand-new school going up right around us out here. There's a whole lot of concrete. Assuming to be a lot of steel and wood. Withdraw? Why? Why that building back? What the cost will be, nobody knows exactly. That would have to be measured. Guaranteed it's non-zero. Even without that, you're still at least a million. And I'm estimating that there would be a $2 million cost. I stand by that. That translates into five bucks per thousand in mill rate increase. And for the average home, there are over $1,000 a year increases. It's a simple math. I'll address to it. You want the second slide? Here's a very close look at tuition. We're paying $370,000. That's actually what we will be paying in this coming budget year. The number hasn't changed very much from this year. The operating increase was less than 1%, so that number is substantial yesterday. Now, if you leave, every single child from sixth grade on gets tuition. So let's look at those costs. The cost to tuition a middle-school student is $8,000. I'll just online. All 2,700 lines, 83 pages. If you all go look at it, if you don't believe me, it's all out there. And I've even indicated here, line to page two. For, it shows 108 students going to TAMS, a student, $864,000. The reason that that's down to that number is because 17 students decided to go to MSK this coming fall, saving $136,000. That number got cut out of the budget from last month. Two different votes, line school board, but $136,000 came right straight out of the budget. So I've added it back in because the total number of kids times $8,000. You go to the high school, age 28, finds 14, 15, and 17. Add them all together, you get $1.942 million. Just that sum. On top of that, by the way, you've got about 38 kids at Kenabunk High School. They would also need to be tuitioned. There's another 400 thing that needs to be added, and that's how you get $370,000. They're up to $3.3 million. The difference being almost $3 million. And these numbers are real. I didn't come cockling. They're in the budget. They get spent, check-stip cut, they get audited. There's no question about it. And the same is true for most other nails. Granted, there are some of few soft costs in here, but where I may have estimated high, I could have estimated low as well, and I think of all the works out. So, this is the math. You can do it yourself. Do we really need a consultant to do this for us?
Yeah.
I'd wager that most any fifth grade to finish in school in a couple of weeks here, every day, it'd ease a huge math. Probably quicker than you. This isn't mathematics. It's magic here. These are firm numbers. You just have to be willing to dig. I am, and I have. I talked extensively with the RSU Finance Director as a unique consultant. I've looked at the same numbers that consultants would look at, the same 2,700 line items. Done the math. I just had to put it all in a fancy binder and put some pictures in and charge for $45,000. But I am. Thinking of better invoice and sending pictures. Thank you.
Jack?
Man, Jack, I have no doubt here that your math is accurate. I mean, you talk about the numbers that come from the RSU. Yes, those are real numbers coming from the RSU. You know, the consultants would use some of these numbers, I assume, but also, they would also answer questions that our town and the people would have regarding what the RSU is expending those dollars that they're putting up there for. And I truly believe, and I've looked at other numbers, I've looked at, now, I've looked at audits going 10 years back, and again, I don't want to argue numbers, but, I mean, compared to other states, where I'm from, there are nine high schools, seven times the amount of students, yet this town, well, this RSU has a third of what they're spending for their students. Again, the quality of education counts, and there's a lot of things that go into play, is what I'm saying, when I feel that those third-party consultants would be the best-qualified people to answer the questions, take those questions into account, pick apart line item by line item on the RSU 21 ledger to see where their budget lies compared to what the school needs for our one school that we have in the town. Again, and the choice, yes, high school has always had choice legally. There's a legal argument going on now for the middle-school choice. But again, even if Ford Academy is successful and get a judgment in their favor, what good is choice if the RSU changes their policy on busing, which they have, and doesn't decide to transport? That's just one issue. Cost sharing. Currently, the cost sharing, your numbers, again, I'm not going to dispute they're not accurate based on the numbers you put up, but that cost sharing can and will change. It's not necessarily going to be in the favor of our town. Our town has managed a dome school before. I believe it can do it again, so do many others. And again, it's complex formulas that is used by the state, you know, to determine the EPS. It's got three different methods. Currently, the town of Rundle gets about $3 million from the state subsidy that goes to the RSU, and we pay roughly about $4. something million in addition. So it's a little over $7 million that we can easily use to our own benefit. Kenabunk gets $1.6 million in state subsidies and then whatever else they put in out of their tax base, which, you know, would say there's substantial loss there to Kenabunk and Kenabunk Board if we do withdraw. Again, that's, you know, that's probably a good reason why there's strong opposition here, including yourself. No disrespect. It's just, you know, it's just the way things are. We got into it with the RSU. We believe we should put this in.
Excuse me. May I ask a question?
Sure.
My name is Ann Gamble. I live in Rundle. You said when you were beginning that you didn't want to talk numbers, right? So you are talking about numbers sort of all over the place, in what I'm hearing? And I believe I just heard you allege that the lovely presentation was geared towards trying to keep some state or federal subsidy in the pockets of Kenabunk. So if you don't want to talk numbers, then what kind of a basis are you presenting for whatever it is you're trying to convey? If you don't want to talk numbers, then what are you going to use?
These are my notes that I just took now, based on the presentation just given.
I know, and I'm just asking you, if you don't want to talk numbers, then what do you want to talk in order to express your opinion to us about this vote? So I'm not understanding what you mean by "I don't want to talk numbers," because that's all you've been listing is numbers.
Right now, yes, just in response to the numbers presented just now.
Right, but in addition, and with all due respect to you, you seem to be saying that you have sources to get other numbers that are going to be either better or stronger or more objective than the RSU 21 source of the data that's been used. So I would like to know, if you have those sources, what they are.
I want those numbers to come out from the third-party analysis.
Right, but it's...
I'm only offering an objective opinion of the numbers given.
So it's from a consultant is going to source numbers that, but you don't know where from?
They're going to get them from, sure, from the RSU, from the town, from historical data, from a lot of places.
Which is what you just said is inadequate.
No, these numbers that are presented, these are inadequate because they're coming from one source. They're coming from current numbers that the RSU has presented.
Which I believe RSU probably sources data in terms of comparison.
Budgeted being the key word. Budgets can and do change, and budgets, again, do not always reflect the actual.
Again, that's numbers, but, okay. I was just wondering if you had something specific that you were aiming at.
I did not come here to talk about numbers. I'm coming to make a statement on behalf of the withdrawal petitioners. That's all I have.
Jack?
Chair Reitz, again. I'd like to mention a couple of things with respect to the need for a consultant. I'd like to talk about the RSU Budget Committee, by the way. On that budget committee are two of the five voting board members who happen to be Rundle presidents. In addition to that, one of our selectmen is on that budget committee. I'm on the budget committee. We are all trying to look out for this town. Believe me, Mr. Dubois attends every budget board meeting. We are paying attention. We are looking at the numbers. And that's why I'm willing and able to stand right here and say, they're accurate. You can spend a lot of money, but understand this. You are walking down the withdrawal path. You're going to have a hell of a time even finding the people, the man, that staffing of that withdrawal committee and go through the ninety-months process. I can't believe any responsible citizen in this town would be willing to do that. There may be some. Nevertheless, I would make that point. The other assumption that I made in my estimates was that the education quality would be the same. That you don't, after the fact, start whacking away at costs and trying to pair every nickel. I want the same delivery, the same quality of education. I might point out, too, that all those teachers are members of the RSU, belong to a union, and they get laid on. That's why I said I'm worried.
Aaronetta from Rundle. I'm not wearing my reading glasses, so forgive me. I just wanted to make a point, a couple of points. The school district is required by law to have the numbers audited financially every year. And if they're not in compliance, they lose federal and state funding. So the numbers that they present, whether it's budgeted, or whether it's today, or whether it's next week, those numbers are accurate and they pass muster. I also wanted to make a point about local control. I was at the recent school budget vote, and there were a little over 130 people there. There are close to 4,000 people in Rundle alone that have the ability to vote. And so if your argument is local control, then people should have been present to vote on the budget.
I knew it was Aaronetta. I don't think a lot of them did. I knew nothing about it.
I know that the school...
Hold the interruptions, please. Just let her finish.
I know that the school board does actually put out public notices that the vote is happening. But the lack of presence at the school budget vote was pretty notable. And so when the voices of 130 people decide the lives of thousands of people... And so when the voices of 130 people decide the lives of thousands of people, that's where you lose local control. So if you have the ability to participate and you don't, you're giving up that local control. If we withdraw, we lose all control. We may negotiate, lots of people are saying that that's what our base up the sleeve is going to be, but as has been evidenced by Deaton's agreement, which people seem to hold up as the bastion of withdrawal success, TA's documentation and their agreement is that they control the curriculum, they control the staff, they control the budget, and that is 100% at their discretion, as well as the students that they accept. So if your parent who has a special needs kid or special education kid, they don't have to take them, that is not a requirement, they're a private school. There is zero control in that, absolutely no control, something I'm taking into consideration. And that goes for TA as well as TMS. And I know for some families that have had some struggles with special ed kids starting in TA, that was a tough road to hug. Other than that, I just have a question for the board. I did get the arrow, and I did read that there was no specific position taken on the advertisement that went out, but I'd like to know your individual positions on withdrawal. I don't expect you to provide any reasoning why, I just would like to know what your position is individually.
Actually, speaking for myself, wanted to hear out this second public meeting. I was interested in if there were any new numbers, any new evidence from the petitioners. I don't think there's many here tonight, I'm not sure why. They were well aware that we were having a second public hearing at the last public hearing. I was kind of hoping for more information from that side, just supporting pact, but for myself, I wanted to hear out this public hearing.
So by the end of this hearing, if nobody's been able to present additional numbers or additional argument, would you be able to share that information with us?
Yeah.
I just, I would like to know, I mean, I think it would be helpful, I mean, I don't mean to push my thumb down on you guys, but you do have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Arundel, and what we are discussing, debating, arguing, pro and con, impacts everybody financially, and you having put forth a petition doesn't necessarily mean that's what you endorse. However, I would be curious to know what your individual positions are.
A couple of things, first, I just want to make some, want to clarify, Bellmer attends all of, you have two board members that attend a school board meeting. So Bellmer attends the financial meetings, and I attend the RSU Board of Director meetings. So, you know, when I go to those meetings, I don't know about the financial meeting, but when I go to those meetings, there's usually three people from Arundel, myself, Jack and his wife, and that's it. So don't sit there and say you don't have a voice, you guys know when those meetings are, you got to go and attend those meetings. As far as my position, as the last time, you know, I wanted to wait, I'm trying to keep an open mind, trying to listen to both sides, and look at the numbers and make my decision. For me, it's clear, are Jack's numbers inflated? I don't know, I don't think so, but even if they are a little bit, there's no way that this can be that much different. The budget is there, it's in black and white, you can look at those numbers, you can go see those numbers, and from a financial perspective, I think it's not good for the town of Arundel, I don't think it's not good for the town of Arundel, for the kids, for the students. The resources that are available through the RSU today far outweigh what Arundel can do by themselves. And I am a supporter, although I'm not, there are times when I don't like what the board does, that's nature, that happens. There are times when you folks don't like what the planning board does, but we do what the government does, that's just the way it goes. But I am a supporter of the RSU 21 and will vote to go against this.
Anybody else on the board want to speak? Ma'am?
My name is Diane Robbins, and I've lived in town for a long time, for like 35 years now. And I can tell you why I would support the process. I've been through the process, I sat on the process, I participated in the process, and I think that it works. Just because you stopped the process doesn't mean that you have to vote to withdraw. We didn't vote to withdraw the last time, although to be quite honest, that was all a bunch of lies. Our elementary school isn't approved, but I don't see $2 million having been put in the school, and if they did, a million of it came from this town, because when we joined the RSU, we handed over 900 and some odd thousand dollars to the RSU. I don't have an issue with having both sides. What I do have an issue with is that this is very one-sided. You don't know what the negotiations are going to be, you don't know what all the costs are going to be. You can take the cost from the RSU, but last time we went through this, we found that the cost wasn't really that, that much. My issue is that the last time we voted on this, we had all of our selectmen support not withdrawing from the RSU. Part of that was driven, I believe, part of it was cost, but a good portion of it was the fact that the RSU stated to me, while I sat on their board, that we would always have choice for middle school. But as soon as that contract ended, that ended choice. Not only did it end choice, but it ended our busing for our high school students, and we're still not sure what's going to happen with the middle school students. Now, regards to the arrow, just so that you know, I have not received my arrow yet, so I don't know how many other people in town have not received their arrow. So I don't know when it was mailed out.
It was mailed out Wednesday? I got mine Thursday, you might want to contact the post office.
Yeah, well, it comes from Kennebunk Port, it takes a good long time, so you might want to allow a little extra time in the summer.
It's also on the website.
Well, you know something, that's fine and dandy to say the website, but I don't have internet in my house, and where I work, we're not allowed to use the internet to do personal things. So I don't have a luxury, nor do I have the time to sit in front of the internet all the time, because I work for a living and I'm raising a child. Now, I would like to see the third-party numbers. I also get concerned when people say, well, they've been involved since the RSU was inceptioned. That's true, but some of these same people didn't contractually ensure that our kids would be busted, bust, didn't contractually ensure that our middle school students would continue to have choice. These are things that bother me. Now, I've been to many, many school board meetings. The last one I went to, I decided I wasn't going back for. They allowed public comment through every single article, everything they discussed until it got to busing. And when they got to voting on their amendment to their new busing, they decided, they made a motion, and they voted, and they allowed no public comment. That doesn't allow the public to say anything. I was there to speak, but before I could say anything, it was signed, sealed, and delivered, and there was no public comment. Now, I've sat on that board, that board is comprised of 12 people, three from Arundel, three from Kennebunk Port, and six from Kennebunk. That is a very weighted board. Not only is it weighted, but sometimes our own board members don't represent us. So now we have high school kids who don't have any transportation, all over $35,000. And some people came to the meeting and said, oh, the town of Arundel should pay for that. I'm like, why? We pay taxes, I pay taxes for the kids to go to school, we didn't stop busing any other high school kids, no, we only did Arundel's. This has been the sequence of events. First, Kennebunk did want us, then we got into a contract, it was almost to the point of signing the contract with Ford Academy, then all of a sudden, they wanted us. But it was too late, we had already negotiated a contract. Then we're told by the selectmen that you have to join an RSU or you're going to lose all your funding. Well, you know something? None of the schools that did join an RSU lost any of their funding. And all of this was supposed to save schools money. The budgets were supposed to go down, consolidating was supposed to reduce costs, and I haven't seen any of that. My taxes go up every single year. Now, I'm not saying that kids don't deserve to be educated, I think they do. This is not just the RSU, I think it's an issue with all of the schools, they're not funded by the state the way they should. We voted and we said we wanted it funded to a certain limit, and the state just decided we're not going to do it. Our school is in bad shape, but you know something? So was the other, so were the other schools in the RSU, that's why we're repairing three of them. We're doing $9,011 million here, I don't know how many at Consolidated, but $40,000, $50,000 at the high school. So schools being in bad shape are not related to just one school. So it's not just Mildred Alde that did take care of this school, the RSU didn't take care of the schools either. The 13% in this, is this before or after cost sharing in the financials that we're given today? The 13% we pay, is that before or after you figure in all our cost sharing from the state?
Who are you asking, Diane?
Jack, please. When you say that we pay 13% of the budget, did you take that 13% after all of the finances that been put in, and then you just figured that what we paid was 13% of the budget?
The state funds, both Kennebunk, Arundel, and Arundel, if you will, go into the pot, the RSU pot, they get rounded together with all of the costs and outcomes, 13%, 50%, 40%.
And the reason I bring that 13% up is because, for people who don't know, Kennebunk Port doesn't get any cost sharing at all from the state, none. So there's no cost sharing that comes from Kennebunk Port. There is cost sharing that comes to Kennebunk, and there's a lot of it of cost sharing that comes from the town of Arundel.
State A. They also pay the biggest portion.
Sorry, State A. So when you're looking at that, and I'm sorry, but it's just one of those things, and if I say something wrong, please at least be kind about the fact that I said it wrong. I don't like looking at numbers and having somebody tell me that they made an assumption, that they're assuming that it's going to be this, and they're assuming it's going to be a million dollars more. I don't like assumptions, because for those of us that say it to our kids, you never say "assume" because it means something bad. The way the board is set up doesn't really allow two towns to be able to do much of anything, because if Kennebunk decides that they want to do something, they have six members. Kennebunk Port only has three, and Arundel only has three. So unless Kennebunk Port and Arundel team up together, they can never override if Kennebunk decides that they want to do something. I've sat in those meetings, I sat on that board for three years, and I think probably one of the reasons why I'm so upset is because I was lied to, and in turn, I ended up lying to the members of my community when they asked me what was going to happen with school choice. And that upsets me very much, because there's one thing I can't stand, is I'm a boss. Whether they did it on purpose or didn't do it on purpose, it just makes me very cautious when none of this was ever discussed during the whole withdrawal process, and we went through this withdrawal process where they sat in front of everybody and said we would continue to have middle school choice. They never said anything about we were not going to continue to bus your kids, either middle school or high school, and that we were not going to allow you school choice. It was, no, you were going to have school choice, and there was no discussion about busing. But as soon as the contract ends, we have no busing for high school at Monaco to TA, and middle school hasn't been resolved yet. That's, for me as a parent, is disheartening, because you're not taking it out on the taxpayers, you're not taking it out on the parents, you're taking it out on the kids. And that's just, it's just, for $35,000, it's just petty. When the budget is big as the RSU, it's $35,000, and not paying $35,000 to bus those kids was just petty. The budget vote, I've been to numerous of those budgets, never even, I've never, ever seen one get voted down, ever. The only time it ever gets voted down is when it goes to the towns. And I'll say again, the last time the selectmen took a stand and this town listened to them, we ended up losing what we thought we were going to have. And that's the part that bothers me the most. And you don't always get a say at these meetings. I have been to numerous meetings at the school board where things have happened before anybody's been allowed to speak, and the busing one was just the last straw for me. You know, you invite us to come to meetings, you tell us that we can't speak on anything that's on the agenda during public comment, but then when the one thing that affects this town greatly comes up, it gets first, second, voted on, and there was not one minute or any allowance for public comment. That's not right. It doesn't allow us any choice, it doesn't allow us to interact with the board. And I'm not happy about it, I'm upset about it. I don't trust much of what they do anymore. Since we've joined this RSU, they have tried to take kids that were going to Thornton to put them in Kennebunk, and ended up causing an issue with the contract, which cost us as taxpayers money...
That's not true.
Yes, they did.
Now, there were families who wanted to go.
The contract stipulated, they took the children, they had to pay money, so they had to pay Thornton money for kids that were not at Thornton, and they had to pay legal fees, and they don't have any money, the money comes from us as taxpayers.
It's the one that you're...
Excuse me, several years later, not only did they try to breach the contract, but then they tried to terminate the contract and put my town into an uproar again. Now, you say we don't have school choice for middle school, and you take away busing. It's like every couple of years, there's a new thing, and I'm starting to feel like, what is it that we can do to Arundel next, is how I'm starting to feel, okay?
Build another school?
You know something, I hate to say this, but you also think... And now you're being rude, and I wasn't rude to anybody that was talking. I'm allowed to have my feelings, I've been through this process, I've seen what it's like to go through withdrawals, I know what it's like to work with these people because I did it. I did it for what, a year and a half, Tom, we did it? It was a long time. I invested a lot of time and energy in it, and I was never rude to anybody that came to the meetings. It's just the way I am. I'm a lot of time...
Can you stand up and just say...
My name is Sean Gary, Arundel resident. What, how long have I been here? How long has my family been here? What difference does it make? My father-in-law was taught by Mildred Alde. Okay, so my father-in-law went to the fire department, went into school, okay, so my family's been here for long enough. I don't think that that's the issue. What do we have, what's our future? We withdraw, what do you guys see us doing? Because it'd be nice to know where my child's headed. My child's in fourth grade right now, has no decision on whether they're going to TMS or whether they're going to Kennebunk. We withdraw, where did my kid go?
Are you asking?
I'm asking anybody who will answer, I think you're the only one who'll answer me now.
Oh, well, I think that, given, I mean, again, if we pass the vote, we get out of the RSU, we have our own school board, we make all those decisions.
Okay, so you re-contract to another school, right?
Yeah. So, we contract with Thornton, we contract with Davis, we contract with Old Orchard Beach, and we...
We contract with Kennebunk, so we call out the RSU to re-contract with Kennebunk.
For those that want to go, they have ties. I mean, that's...
So we're going to contract to multiple schools? We're going to have multiple busters?
We could, well, again, that's all, that's the negotiation, I'm not saying what is, I'm saying what could be, that's all.
So we have no idea what we're withdrawing to? There's no, nobody here, the petitioners side, has any idea what we're withdrawing?
That's why I want to get the study done.
You want to find out, send our legal... You, you wanna find out, send our plea to all the schools?
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying, Josh. I'm saying, we wanna get the study done, see where we are financially, can we support our own school and be able to make those decisions?
I have, I have another question. If we end up contracting to the same school and it's not Thornton Academy, how are you guys gonna feel about that? Let's say all of our kids gotta go to Old Orchard Beach. It, it, how's that, how's that gonna-
That's what I'm saying, is we'll have that choice. We would, we would definitely wanna continue our relationship with Thornton and continue our relationship with Kennebunk. And I, and I'm not buying, see, the way, I'm, you're all up here, I, I'm not from Arundel.
How's that not gonna tax us? How's that not gonna tax us in the capital?
It's gonna tax us, and, and, and the RSU is gonna tax us as well, and I think more heavily. That's, that's where I'm at. I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be sitting here, I wouldn't be giving those decisions.
This is, this is where it's hard for me to understand what, where your stance is.
Uh, I, I think I can answer that, and I think I can answer it with some degree of confidence here.
Could you do it at the podium?
What's that?
Could you do it at the podium?
Oh, sure.
I'm gonna bring you guys back in.
Again, the, the, the size of this RSU's budget is not proportionate to the amount of kids, nor the number of schools that it has. It's not.
According to?
According to, you, again, look at, look at, look at national statistics.
According to what? You can't say according to and then not have a, where'd you get that from?
Again, I gave, I gave one example of the number of school systems we left for Massachusetts. Hundred and thirty million dollar budget for nine schools and about seven times the amount of students. Hundred and thirty million. We have forty-three million for a fraction of that.
And how did Massachusetts get that?
Just by eyeballs, I'm not gonna give you factual numbers. You want that, I can't give that to you. And I will, I will say it over and over again, this is why we need the study done. To spend even up to forty-five thousand dollars, which is less than two percent of what the annual cost Jack reached was saying, two million something dollars a year, to get this information that we need to answer your question. I'm not gonna profess these things. I don't have any right to, nor, I mean-
I, I don't see we're getting the numbers from any place that's more reliable than the budget itself. I don't know, I, I, I feel kind of hard trying to understand where the petitioners are coming up with these angles, and, and why this is better. I'd, I'd like to hear why this is better, like, I can come up with ten different reasons.
Tell you what, I would be the first one at the voting booth. If, if, if the third-party independent study says that it's in the best interest to stay with the RSU, I will vote.
Exactly. That's what we said last time.
Right. And it was very close last time, too. A hundred, less than a hundred votes. Um, while I'm up here, I just wanted to address one thing that, uh, Aaron had mentioned about special needs, near and dear to my heart. Because I have a special needs child in his second year at Thornton. He came here to Mildred Elde School. We had the option, despite the Thornton contract, to go to Kennebunk Middle or to Thornton Academy Middle. And again, I didn't grow up here, so I'm not partial either way. We went to both schools, we both spoke with the special needs, went over their entire curriculum. Thornton was the better option, and it was also Mildred Day, the special needs coordinator here at the time, that recommended Thornton Academy Middle School for us to go to for special needs. And, the RSU earmarks three hundred thousand dollars in their latest budget, too, per year, that money that goes into their general fund if they don't use it, and earmarking another three hundred thousand dollars a year, every year after that, for what ifs? Explain this to me.
I can't explain Thornton's budget to you. It's our staff, though, that provides that special education.
In your schools, yes. Oh, Louise Benham is an RSU?
Oh, I know. We got someone at the podium. Hi, Matt Silvans. I wanted to reiterate something that Diane said, and that's about treating everybody with the utmost respect. I think it's absolutely important. And I say this completely respectfully to you, Diane, but I've been involved in this since the beginning of withdrawal talks and consolidation and all that. You've talked about being on the board, and in many, many meetings, I hear about how you've been lied to, that we've been lied to. And earlier tonight, you said that, you know, the people that have been involved have lied. I think you should re-characterize that a little bit. I think in this process, everybody uses the best information available. Unfortunately, in life, information changes. But if you spent three years on that board, and you didn't do the job that you think you should have, then it should be a "we" and not a "they." Okay, because it was everybody looking at the same information. The one thing about the public education system is, everything happens in the open. So, I don't believe that there were backroom discussions, I don't think that anybody lied to anybody. I think information changed, okay, information continues to change. However, eight, nine years ago, I don't know, how long has it been since we first went through consolidation? The numbers then said that it made sense to consolidate larger school systems, spread the cost, just made sense. It made sense three years ago? Is that one we went through? Four years ago? Four years ago. Study said it makes sense to stay together. Don't think the study is gonna change. In fact, I'm a little upset that the selectmen haven't come out and made a decision, I understand why, still trying to gather information. We have a town manager, whose job it is to work for the town of Arundel, and to try and steer the town in the right direction. I'd be curious first to find out if, Keith, if you've done any work in what you have found in your studies, somebody from the budget board who did make a recommendation, I'd be interested to hear what went into that. I understand the recommendations that they do not support this effort, so I'd be curious to see what went into that. Have anyone got a note? We'll just leave it at that, I'd like to hear from those entities and see where we're at. Thank you.
Matt, in response to the board, I, I just, I feel like we need to hold, and I know, I realize Diane just came up with this with his side, but, um, I just feel personally that from a board perspective, we need to stay as neutral as possible and hear as much as possible from a board standpoint. On a personal level, you know, I have my own feeling with that. I, I, I just feel like, as a board, we need to represent the whole town. That's why I'm kinda waiting for that wow factor from the petitioners, but I just, I don't know, I don't know where it's lacking, but I just, I don't feel like we're getting enough petitioner support to warrant-
Maybe there's a reason.
But I, you know, I was hoping to hear it tonight.
My comment was not from the board, my comment was in the actual spot, nothing to do with the board.
So, more quickly. Not to put Keith on the spot, but, I'm somebody from the budget board, but I really, you know, tonight would be the time to hear it.
Just wait and see if John's going to the, are you going up there?
Yeah, my name's John Bell, I've been on the budget board for three years. We voted against this wild and crazy scheme, because it is gonna be horrendously expensive for the town of Arundel. And it's that simple. As, uh, somebody said earlier, this has taken us on the road to a financial disaster, and there ain't no getting around it, folks. Vote for this withdrawal, you better start looking for a tax bill which has increased very, very substantially from what you've been used to. I would also point out that since we decided to stay in the RSU in 2012, the property tax rates in Arundel have stayed very, very stable. I think we might, I think out of those four years, we might have had a tax increase one year, minor. We've had a couple of years in a row that we kept the tax rate the same. If you wanna follow this guy down the road, you'll walk out.
So my name's Mary Batzluus, I am Arundel resident, and I have two children in this school currently. I am also one of your elected RSU 21 board members. In that capacity, which I have been in since July of 2014, I am serving or have served in the following roles. Vice Chairperson of the school board, Chairperson of the policy committee for two consecutive years, member of the finance committee for two consecutive years, member of the MLDA building committee that is overseeing this renovation project, member of the facilities committee, member of the curriculum committee, member of the insurance task group that is currently reviewing the health insurance that the RSU provides for all of its teachers and staff, member of the strategic planning and master facilities committee, which have outlined the plans for the RSU for the next five years, and member of the committee that most recently negotiated the teacher's contract. I am your voice for local control. In my tenure, I have received two emails from concerned Arundel residents about items and opinions that they would like to express to me as their elected representative on the school board. Two, in two years. During my time on the school board, I have heard a recurring statement that RSU 21 is a bad marriage that was forced on the towns of Arundel, Kennebunk, and Kennebunk Port by the state. And personally, I strongly disagree with that statement. In microeconomic theory, economies of scale are the cost advantages of enterprise, that enterprises obtain due to size and scale of their operations, with cost per unit generally decreasing with increasing scale, so that fixed costs are spread out and they lower your per-unit cost. That is economies of scale. Said differently, a school district can more economically educate its student population when the, when its costs are shared across a number of towns. RSU 21 is a wonderful example of economies of scale in practice. When the district sought to, when the district sought private financing of the forty-five million dollar bond to renovate three schools in the district, MLDA being one of them, which is actually sinking into the ground, it was able to use Kennebunk's AAA rating to secure a twenty-year interest rate that was half a percentage point less than what was offered through their only other option of financing, which is the main municipal bond bank. That favorable interest rate saved the district's taxpayers, all of us in this room, approximately two point seven million dollars over the life of the bond. When the district again seeks to, seeks private fund, private funding for the remaining bond financing, it will again enjoy the luxury of Kennebunk's AAA rating and is expected to secure an interest rate that is again significantly lower than what is offered by the main municipal bond bank, which will again save all of the district's taxpayers money. Had the town of Arundel faced the task of financing renovation of this school on its own, it would have been saddled not only with a higher interest rate, but also the entire cost of renovation. Economies of scale are allowing Arundel taxpayers to pay seven point three million dollars for a renovation that costs eleven million dollars. That is nearly a four million dollar savings. Some of you may not be aware of how RSU 21 distributes its special needs students K-5. Because of the size of the district and the facilities it has available, the district is able to distribute its special education services, making each elementary school a center for a specific student need. That means that special education students from across all three towns are educated in the building that best fits their needs. Each building's special aid program services students from across the district. Again, economies of scale are allowing costs to be distributed across the district, lowering the overall cost for each town. On its own, Arundel would need to house all special ed students in one building, increasing the amount of space and staff, and thereby costs needed to accomplish the same educational programs. My attendance at over one hundred school board meetings in the last two years has shown me one thing, that students and families in RSU 21 are so fortunate. We are fortunate to have a twelve-person board looking out for the interests of twenty-five hundred students and all taxpayers. We are fortunate to have an administration that is dedicated to providing each of those twenty-five hundred students a cutting-edge, top-notch educational foundation. And we are fortunate to have teachers and staff whose dedication is second to none. When I look at the combined district of RSU 21, I do not see a bad marriage, but rather a happy combination of towns and people dedicated to educating its students to their very fullest potential. We do not need to fund a study to withdraw from RSU 21. Please vote no on June fourteenth.
In case anyone doesn't know me, I'm Sean Hayes, and I probably don't need this microphone. Born and raised in this town, left for the military service, I came back, I actually lived in Kennebunk for a couple of years. I moved my family into Arundel.
Somebody talking, I realize people are leaving, but if you could just be behind me a little bit, please.
I took it upon myself because I felt I had an obligation to give back to the community. I've been on the budget board for close to fourteen years. Only a couple of those times was I elected. Most of those times I was appointed, because there was lack of interest. So, I've spent a lot of time, I was here on the budget board before the consolidation, through the whole process, right up till now. A lot of people want to know what the selectmen had to say in regards to this. In its public knowledge, the budget board decided not to, they didn't wanna go through with withdrawal. It was a three-two vote. I was split because I wore two hats. I'm chairman of the budget board, and I'm also a parent of several students in the RSU. I had to look at it several ways. I had actually voted for the withdrawal at the budget board or during this meeting. So that, my feeling was that we needed to go through this. For the only purpose, is because there are some individuals that keep on pushing it, that the numbers are wrong, the numbers are wrong. It's been proven time and time again, evidently, it needs to be proven again. But, as a budget board, voted three to two, not in favor of the withdrawal. Personally, I'm not for the withdrawal. So I believe that we should stay with the RSU, that being the side. I just felt that everyone should know, there was a lot going on with our discussion with the budget board. It went through four votes before we actually had the three-two vote. And, that's basically it. But, my personal feelings is that we should stay with the RSU. But, that's, and that's also in line with what the budget board went in agreement for. And I'm more than happy to talk to anybody after this, in regards to what our decisions were and what my feelings are. in regards to what our decisions were and what my feelings are. But I at least want to put out what the Budget Board had to do. And it was tough because I have a responsibility to the town as a chairperson. What's best for the town, and also what might help us get back together as a town. Because since this whole thing with Thorn Academy, it has divided this town and put neighbors against neighbors, which I find absolutely appalling, absolutely appalling. In seeing some of the people's childish activities that they've been doing to support their agenda has been ridiculous. But that's all I'm gonna say. And again, if anyone wants to talk to me afterwards, I'd be more happy to talk to everybody.
Thank you, Sean.
Hello, I'm Linda Zook, an Arundel resident. Before we start, I have a little presentation, but I just wanna make a comment that I, is that me? I understand that, you know, people's lives are busy. People got games and whatever going on across baseball. But this is the most pathetic display of a public meeting for something so important in our town. I'm just really appalled. There should be at least 200 people that signed that petition sitting here, at least. Because they're the ones who are putting us through this, but anyway. All right, I looked at the numbers a little bit differently here and now. I might not be qualified to operate this.
Push the button.
All right, it's highlighted, but there you go. That number right there, that's the amount of the tax liability for the town of Arundel for our school budget, okay? But where are they? Oh, thanks, John. I do, you know, yes, the amount of state aid is not, you know, subtracted from that. But if you look down at Kennybunkport, it receives no state aid. You'll see that even if we was to add the state aid back in, they're still paying more, and we have more kids. The thing about the state aid is, in the last study they told us, because of ETS and how that all works, I don't know how it all works, but the state aid would be less that we were receiving if we was to go out on our own. And also, I believe in recent, there was just, you know, the state aid amount that we're getting is going down and down and down. It's a wild card. It's nothing for us to rely on. So 4.5 million, that's what the town of Arundel pays. Next slide, John? I'm not gonna use this because I'm not smart enough. Okay.
We went to a different presentation.
Different presentation.
Anything?
That's me.
That's all I have.
That was yours, Lento, right?
That next page.
Just go down. Hang on here.
I think that's the arrow down at the bottom, isn't it, the page?
Bottom.
Bottom left.
Bottom left.
Okay. All right, so this is taken from the year's budget. I know it says proposed, but this was the amount that was approved on, right? Jack? Was that the amount that was approved? That was the second meeting, so that was the amount. Is the amount for MLDA, is 1.6 million, that's for the teachers' salaries, benefits, and that goes into MLDA from the RSU. So, next slide, John? All right, and this is what, you know, goes into that 1.6 million. 12 teachers, 0.5 art teachers, 0.4 music teachers, 0.2 band, right? So, okay. 0.5 is, yeah, 0.2, 0.5, 0.9, those are gonna be hard to get full numbers there when we go out on our own. So, go to the next one. This is the tuition bill to Tams and TA, and is it the other schools that we tuition out to as well, I believe? It's all tuition.
If it's showing a larger...
Yeah, it's 2.8. That's the amount that we pay for tuition. And Kennybunk and Kennybunkport have nobody that did tuition now. That's all Arundel.
No, well, no, there are other tuition students. They're all to Berwick.
Oh, they're all Arundel. Kennybunk tuitions to Berwick Academy?
They don't pay though.
So that's a 2.8?
That's why that number is larger than what it shows. That's the total tuition bill.
No, very much, no?
But town Kennybunk does not pay public dollars to send any of their students to any other school system. And that is the...
That's Arundel.
That number is for all Arundel students, regardless of where they attend. The vast majority of that is for Tams and TA. Some of it is for other schools, but it is all of Arundel students.
Okay, all right, great. Next. And this is the debt service for the new school loan portion. Principal and interest, I think it's the number 65, 783. I know we keep talking that all that stuff gets negotiated, gets negotiated. I can tell you right now, I don't believe that we're not gonna negotiate a price for this new school at less than what these renovations are gonna pay for. They're not gonna give us a school for a fraction of what they put into it. So I don't believe that's gonna be negotiated. So we go to the next one? Okay, so a cost to run Arundel independently. 12 tax assessments, 4.5. Cost to operate MLDA, 1.6. Tuition to TA, Tams, and others, 2.8. MLDA principal and interest, 12,000. That gives us a negative balance of $380,000. And we still have to pay for facilities maintenance, right?
Special ed.
Fussing? Administration? Special education?
Because it's not in yet.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, where's the state subsidy too?
We've already talked about that at the beginning. No, and we said that was the bad amount.
Minus 30,000 would be the amount we'd offer.
Yeah, and special education without fussing. The state subsidy, that would be less when we go alone, because... Yes, we do. We knew that last time, because, yes, we do.
Do you get confirmation from the state on that? Anyone? No.
If you didn't use the lower number anyway, you used the full subsidy amount again right now, right?
Huh?
Yes.
You used the full subsidy amount again right now.
Right, I used the full subsidy amount, not the lower, not the lower number if we was to go alone. So anyway, that's just the way I'm looking at it. I mean, just... It's a good deal, the way you're getting around it.
Where's that money come from? To pay for those things?
Oh, what, the difference?
Yeah.
Kennybunk, Kennybunkport figured that out.
Oh.
Yes.
But if we're doing it on our own...
We're doing it on our own.
Right, thanks. All right, that being said, has any consideration been given to the impact of this on the business community? I think not. If these forecasts are at all close to being correct, and they are, then it is not just the people with fixed incomes and limited budgets that are affected by this. The average business property looks to be approximately $225,000. Based on $225,000, that business is looking at 1,250 tax hike. To put the number into perspective, Houston Company, a non-voting business, they're looking at $2,300 a year. They run the market, a non-voting business, $2,600 a year.
Extra?
Extra. That's a lot of coffee and sandwiches. Bentley's, $3,500. That doesn't include the campground. That's another $2,700. And he can have a bike run to benefit himself, so... MMJ, $2,700. Dutch M Golf Course, $11,000. Wears Buick GMC, hold dear, his mom, $24,000. Some of these small businesses will have difficulty with such expenses. Those that rent will probably face an increase in monthly lease payments. They might find more difficult to compete with the rentals to the north and to the south of us. My guess is we would lose tenants. It's hard enough for some of these businesses. Consideration needs to be given to them. We already have difficulty attracting businesses to Arundel. Why is it that Arundel, which is rich with cost-efficient, naked land, is so hard to bring businesses to our town? They go to the town hall and run? And they find out that we lack services and infrastructure they run? How about when we tell them that the mill rate is gonna be over $20? Then they will definitely run. The artists stand defending why we should not withdraw from the RSU when I have yet to hear one good reason why we should. I get that you're upset that Tams is no longer a choice, but 6th grade is after 2017. I was upset. I do not get how, because you feel like something was taken from you that gives you the right to disrupt this entire town. I do not get how you think it's okay to give up the financial security and the quality of education that the RSU has given the town of Arundel because you want your child to go to Tams at the expense of Arundel. At the expense of us. It worked out. Why I choose not to get the facts in June? Because I do not want our town to go through this again. I do not want to spend the next five months or longer with this bitter divide. I have seen such hate come from our community that I would never imagine existed. I do this because I know this is right for the future of our town, and I have way too much invested. You might not want to send your child to Kennybunk. Why, I do not know. What I want is for my grandchildren, for that generation, if my sons choose to stay here, to have a quality education, to have a quality education system with certainty. I want them to be proud of the service in their community. If you want the facts, just open your eyes. Stop this now so that we can start to heal and grow as a community. Taunche, oh. I know you can't read it. I have copies of it. Taunche wrote this letter to all of us after the last election. As I read it now, I realize, had we listened and tried to do as he said, we would not be in this position. Proponents of the RSU would know how wonderful the RSU is and what they have given us. How they truly want us to be a part of the system, our system. Thank you.
My name's Nelson Galou. I live on River Road. Well, actually off River Road. If I was on it, it'd be in River. And I've been there for 17 years now. I did teach for 38 years in middle school, 7th and 8th grade math. Four of them at Sockle Middle School. The other 34 in MSAD 71 in RSU 21. There are a couple of things that I can agree with Diane on. Because when the RSU was formed, or actually before we actually voted to join, I was one of the people who was extremely upset when I was told that the choice for high school students to go to TA was going to be retained if we joined. And I was also told at the time by the school board that the state would not accept their petition to form an RSU without keeping that middle school choice. It was not something the RSU told us. It was something the state told us. Because I went to a school board meeting, and it wasn't Diane that told me that, but she was on the board present at that meeting. I was in, we talked about it in contract negotiations. Diane was part of the board's team for that when we dealt with it also. And so everybody knew that I was quite upset about it. It just seemed to me that it didn't make sense. Especially because when I was in high school, back in 1969, we went through it. Lebanon Maine did not have a high school. Their high school students either went to Berwick, which became part of MSAD 60. They or Sanford or Spaulding High School in Rochester, New Hampshire, and they had the choice, and Lebanon paid the tuition. When we joined and a district became MSAD 60 in 1969, became Noble High School, and by the way, for those of you that don't know, that's what Noble actually stands for, is North Berwick, Berwick and Lebanon. That's where the school came from. There was no choice. Everybody came to Noble High School, or else you paid tuition and found out how to get to the school you wanted to go to, however you could get there. And believe me, I wasn't one of those because I was from North Berwick. However, a number of my friends grumbled significantly that first year. Well, I wish I could go here, and I wanted to go there, and it's not gonna be as good here. But by the time, that was my sophomore year. By the time we came back from our junior year, I never heard another word of it again. Kids are resilient. They adjust a heck of a lot better than the adults do. And I said this at the last meeting, there is a lot of animosity between segments of Kennybunk, Kennybunkport, and Arundel that have been around a lot longer than I have. Probably even longer than my wife's family. My wife's family is seventh-generation Kennybunk. If you're not related to a Wentworth, you certainly know a hell of a lot of them. Anyway, so we're at that. However, so that was something that, you know, was out there. And I was very happy when I read in the newspapers that once the Tams contract ended, the students would need to come to MSK. Because my feeling is, if they go to MSK for three years, the overwhelming majority of them are probably gonna continue to Kennybunk High School. Just like if they go to Tams for three years, probably the majority of them are gonna continue to go to Dartmouth Academy. At the time the Tams contract came into play, Kennybunk Middle School did not have room for all 160 6th, 7th, and 8th graders from Arundel. We were within 20 or 30 students of capacity of the building. At the time we formed the RSU, in 2009, we now had room. Our enrollment went from 670 at MSK down to roughly 510 to 515 that we have now. So there is room to do that, okay? That is the reason Kennybunk did not make a strong pitch to bring in, to sign a contract for Arundel students. I'm not gonna go through. We don't have to see, I say again, how much Arundel test scores and the educational quality of K-5 has improved. I think everybody pretty much can see that. It would save us almost, it would save us almost the total $8,000 for every 6th, 7th, or 8th grader who chooses to go to MSK starting next year. Because until we get up to a fairly sizable number, the cost wouldn't increase. It wouldn't cost any more to heat or light the building or maintain it. And you wouldn't have to hire any more staff until you reached a certain threshold. So we could save a significant amount of money there. The expert told us in 2012, in all likelihood, it would cost us more to go alone. Because I was the one that asked him the question. And with everything else, the way it is now, increase in costs, the better cost-sharing formula that we now have, there is no way that it would save us money to pull out and be better off for us. I also understand from reading the arrow that the cost of town services, the town operating budget, is up $54,000 some odd dollars, correct, from last year? So we're looking at additionally wanting to spend $45,000, almost the entire amount of extra that costs us to run the town for a year? There's something wrong with that picture. And just finally, as a math teacher for 38 years, if someone came to me and presented this situation for me to go over in my math classroom with my students, believe me, I would never do it with this if I was still teaching with this town because I wouldn't want to have anyone say, oh, you're influencing this, you're influencing that. But if someone brought me a similar scenario with these figures, I would simply say to my students, economically and educationally, it is a no-brainer to stay with what we have. Done. Done.
Ira Cam, Arundel resident. Keep this fairly brief, but just want to reiterate again. I am hearing a lot from a lot of real estate brokers I work with on a daily basis about people wanting to look at Arundel versus the other two towns that are in the RSU. And they are definitely hesitant to buy in Arundel right now with the fact that we might be getting out of the RSU. People do want to come here to be in the RSU, not because they want a choice to possibly go somewhere else. And, you know, this is, again, it's not a fact. It's just an opinion from the people that I've worked with on a daily basis in this real estate market. My wife is also president of the PTA in the school. Noel's been a huge help there, appreciate that, she does too. And so I know that means a lot to you, and it means a lot for the kids at the school, all the fun stuff they get to do through the PTA now. When she took over as president of the PTA, there was like two or three grand in the PTA account. And they were constantly having to fight to build it up. Because they were, and they never got to do anything fun with it, because they always had to buy votes for the library or school supplies for the classrooms and things like that. Now, the money that they raise gets to go to fun projects where the kids really just get to let loose and have a good time, and do movie nights, and head pouncy houses, and things like that. That's because we don't have to fight for every single nickel to put into the school to just keep it afloat. You know, there's a little bit of extra to go around for, not just to make sure the education is top-notch, but to keep our school running. And that way, the PTA funds can go where they should go to, and that's just for the kids. I would also like to add, I don't think the busing thing is done yet. I think that they're still coming back with other options. It's not a done deal. They're still coming back with trying to figure out how to get kids bused. It's not over. They are still negotiating with Tams on that. I don't know facts, I'm just saying, I know that whatever the vote that they passed is not the final decision about, there's not going to be any busing for anyone. I think that's my take.
So unless you want to...
No, go ahead, you're better at it.
Well, so I do want to, I didn't talk about it before, because I had written it down, and I was a little amped up. I'm sure I can say it calmly. Thornton Academy has changed its... should I go there? I'm having to sit at here. So I just want, for education for everyone about the busing issue. Thornton Academy recently changed, voted to change the start time for Thornton Academy Middle School and Thornton Academy to be in line with Saco Public Schools, and Old Orchard Beach Public Schools, and Bitterford Public Schools. Because they all send their high school students to the regional tech center at Bitterford. So they are required to have the same start time as Bitterford High School. So Bitterford was really driving that process. And so all the rest of those schools fell in line with that. That precludes the ability for RSU 21 to actually provide busing, using RSU 21 buses for either Thornton Academy Middle School or Thornton Academy. Because their middle school and high school will now be starting at the same time that our elementary schools are starting in RSU 21. So we just physically can't put our buses on the road at the time needed. So understanding that they, Thornton Academy, understanding that they were making this decision is going to, we are in negotiations with their, our business manager and their business manager are in negotiations about bringing forth a cost-sharing agreement so that the RSU provides funding for busing for middle school students through the transitionary period of, for the next three years. And Thornton Academy has proposed to pay for all of the costs for busing, for busing high school students from Arundel to Thornton Academy.
Using who's buses?
Using someone else's buses. Because RSU 21 cannot physically put its buses on the road in two different places at the same time. So the busing issue is not finalized. We do not have an agreement at this point. But it is a much more positive scenario than originally thought. And I am confident that there will be buses that will transport Arundel students to Thornton Academy and to Thornton Academy High School when they need to be transported.
Oop, I have a question. Do you have a sense of, if they're considering in RSU 21 to change start time? I know it's way too late to do it this year.
We will not, the board is not considering changing start times now.
I know that.
We are, it will, we're not, it's not something that the board is looking at anytime in the near future. We really want to get through these renovation projects before we tackle another big change.
My name is Joan Howell, and I'm a resident of Arundel. I've heard many say that all we want is a study, and that it's worth it to understand the numbers. But it's not just a study, it's really the start of the withdrawal process. It'll take hundreds, if not thousands, of work hours for our committees. Diane, you talked about it, you went through it. Slayton, Tom, you were on it. So it's not a small, it's not a small feat to pass out every nuance of our gross from the RSU. And I believe that that's wasting time that's better spent on improving the great education our kids are always getting. And $45,000 is not monopoly money. In a town that fights over $5,000 for the Eastern Trail, or $10,000 or $12,000 for the library, $45,000 is a lot of money that could be put to better use. And to what end? I believe the gross numbers are available now to make an informed decision of the cost. If the petitioners do not agree, then I challenge them to use the information that's available to all, the same info any consultant would use, to show us why withdrawal will not cause a huge tax increase. John? Tuition is an example of cut and dry. There's sort of four areas: operations, the debt, special education, and tuition. And I don't have a lot of experience with the debt of the operations or special education. But to me, simply what happens with tuition was so overwhelming to me that I wanted to just look at it again. I know Jack highlighted it, but it was just amazing to me. Right now, middle school tuition is $8,000 per student, and high school is $10,006. Those change, I've never heard them going down, but that's what they are right now. So currently, we have 108 middle school tuition students. So that's $864,000. We have 183 high school tuition students. That's $1,939. So that's a total, those two together, 864 and $1,909, together come out to the $2.803, $800. And that's what the tuition is for the kids in Arundel. We only pay $364,494. So we pay $364,000 for $2.80 cost. If we withdraw, we'll own 100% of that. So for the middle school students, we have the 864, plus the 17 kids that are going to MSK. If we're out of these RSU, well, they're not going to take them for free, they're going to want tuition. So when you add the 864, plus the 17, you get a million bucks. We will own 100% of the high school tuition, the 1.9, plus the cost of the 38 students that are at Kennebunk High School, for a total of $2.342. So the total will be $3,342,600, as opposed to $384,000. I mean, to me, that alone was just amazing, and says it all for me. That on its own would be enough. And then I look at, so what do we, what do we get for our, what do we get for our money? Well, first, I just had to say. So, no, that's good. So if we stay here, we're paying $364, you know, we can handle that. We've been handling it, that's okay. But to go to $3,300,000, to expect taxpayers to pay that is just, to me, a... So what do we, so what happens is, if we withdraw, we pay 100% rather than the 13%. So the cost of every child leaving the 5th grade in MLDA, it's like handing $66,400 to that child for seven years. And that number comes from three years at $8,000, and four years at $10,060. So it's like, we're, every kid, we have to do that. And it leaves this town. It leaves the town. And what do we get? So I'm not going to talk about the quality of the two systems. I'm not an expert in that, I know there's lots of opinions. But I'm assuming that both systems give our kids a quality education. But as far as local control, so we stay in the RSU, we pay $364,500, we'll call it, and we get local control through the representation on the Board of Education and all the committees, if we choose to do so. If we are outside, we essentially pay $3,342,600, and have no control, no representation. You're not allowed to sit at a board, you're not allowed to speak. They have all the control. So, to me, the cost of the tuition portion of school budget is enough on its own to convince me that withdrawal is a financial no-go, and we lose all control from 6th grade on. Now, oh, not yet. So I'm sorry that Diane left, because I can understand the anger and the frustration and the feeling of betrayal some of the Tams families feel. I also thought there was going to be no middle school choice. But I believe there's a better way than withdrawal, and the folks that are interested in choice are already doing it. And that's, but the question belongs, the question should be decided in the court. There's a suit that families that are interested in their children going to Tams, and Tams is helping support that, and support those families, to decide what was the right thing. We heard that they were, now we find out that the state looked at it wrong, and now we don't have to. But there was expectation set up. So what's that all about? And to me, that's something that needs to be decided by the court. If the families prevail, then there will be middle school choice without withdrawal. So you could have choice and still only be paying $384,000. So in my opinion, we put first things first, and that the issue should be decided in court, not with withdrawal, and not by tearing our town apart. Thank you.
How you doing, everybody? My name's Mike Woods, I live in Arundel, 49 Hayley Road. Moved here about fifteen years ago, about a town. My name's Crawford, the first one on that court docket list, I believe. I got my copy, because I believe that's where it should be resolved as well. I don't like to see old bickering in the town, even though I haven't lived here all my life and grew up in York. Married a Kennebunk girl. I wear a Bitterford shirt, I suppose. Relate money to them, so I get a free T-shirt. But I do believe that when we speak at the microphone, and we speak in front of our fellow constituents, that we use, we don't use terms like "they" and "he" and "she." And if you have opinions about the matter, use the facts, like this fine lady did right here. She was to the point, she was, what her beliefs were with hard fact numbers. Everybody has an opinion, everybody has a say, everybody pays the same taxes. And I've served in the service now for nineteen years, and still serving. And the last time I checked, we all have that right to choose. So I just wanted to say thank you for everybody's time. And I'm hoping this plays out, because I believe this should have been the first step between both communities right here, and none of this would have even happened in the first place. That's why I stepped my name there first on the docket. Thank you, and have a good night.
Dorothy Bragwar. After seeing the numbers that the withdrawal group did not show us tonight, and based on the factual numbers that Jack, Joan, and Linda have shown us, I'm thinking a vote to go any further on withdrawal would be a seven-shades-of-stupid scenario. Stop the nonsense now, save the $45,000, save the hundreds of hours of community members beating this dead horse. Let's move on by voting no on the biggest tax increase Arundel has ever seen. Vote no on putting Arundel's education in jeopardy. Vote no, June 14. And this time, I really would love to have personal speaking points for the selectmen on how they feel about withdrawal. I'm not asking how they're going to vote in the booth on June 14, but I am asking, as individual selectman, that I really believe to get elected to look out for the best interests of us in Arundel in the future. I would really, really like to go right down the line and get you to have your opinion on withdrawal.
How everybody feels about it. Being that I already spoke, and I thought I was clear with... I don't need you now, but the phone wants to go.
Okay. That may not... Well, first of all, I'd like to tell you right now, I'm voting no on June 14. And here's a few reasons why. First of all, when we joined the RSU, we still are guaranteed high school choice. We're very fortunate. Kennebunk and Kennebunk Board are footing the bill for our kids to go to the high schools of their choice. We send kids to Thornton Academy. We send kids to Bitterford High School. We send kids to the New School. As a matter of fact, I know of a family who is moving into Arundel. They have four kids, and they're moving into Arundel because two of those kids are in high school, and they're sending those two to the New School. Currently, tuition at the New School is $10,000 a year. Right now, we have five students there. We send kids to Berwick, we have one there. Our kids have choice. In the past, we've sent kids to Rainfleet. Noel mentioned that being in the RSU has done some good for the school. Well, I think some good, when you take a school that was in the bottom 10% of the state and bring it up to the top 10% of the state, that really is some good. He talks about qualified third parties. You can sit down and make a couple of phone calls. Call the Department of Education, they'll tell you what the tuition rate is. One thing Joan did mention when she mentioned tuition is the insured value factor. When our kids go to these private schools, we not only pay that state rate, but we pay over and above that as an insured value factor. Not only call the RSU, but make an appointment and go in and sit down, look at the books, look at the... look at the bills, look at what's been paid, those numbers aren't going to change. They're not going anywhere. And you talked about the cost sharing. I was on that cost sharing committee. It was Arundel, I believe, that requested the cost sharing committee. Kennybunk Port went along with it. A cost sharing committee was put together that consisted of the town managers of all three towns, a budget board member from all three towns, a school board member from all three towns, and a selectmen from all three towns. Paid for by the RSU, and there was an attorney who facilitated that meeting. We worked for several months to get a cost sharing agreement that was as fair as possible to all three towns. And I can tell you, we had an excellent cost sharing agreement. When you talk about, someone said something about we're not repairing them all, meaning repairing all the schools. And you're right, we are not repairing them all. We aren't even repairing this school. Kennybunk and Kennybunk Port are repairing this school. If we're not in the RSU, every one of those costs are going to be handled by every one of us. And when it comes time for the selectmen to be working with the budget board and we're handed those costs, then this town, I do believe, is going to be a deep, deep trouble. I know I am. I'm on a fixed income, and I don't think that if this school was on its own, and this school is the only place we could save money, that even if we contracted out every service possible, from special ed to the administration, to busing, to food services, to everything that we could possibly contract out, that we could save enough money on this school, we'd go back again, going backwards with the education for the kids in this school. And that's not fair to the kids, and it's not fair to the taxpayers. I'm voting no.
I'll just add a quick statement, you've already heard mine, I'm going to reiterate that. I wish Diane was still here, but I want to speak a little bit about, you know, when she mentioned that the board doesn't, we have members of our community that are on the board that don't represent us. Just because that individual doesn't agree with the same thing that we agree with doesn't mean that they don't represent us. Now, I'm not happy with decisions that they made, but that's a democratic process. Otherwise, we'd all be driving Fords, so. So, you know, that's the way the process works. We may not agree with their decisions, we've elected them, and we're hoping that they make their decision based on the interests of the whole community. And, pretty much, I'm like that.
I had the misfortune of being on the school board during the consolidation process. And I'll be the first to admit, I think I was in over my head, because as much of a number guy as I am, that was a confusing process. And I can remember the late night meetings, the discussion between the committees, the boards, the promises that were made. And it seemed as if it took a long time to come to fruition, but I got to admit, I've had the luxury of seeing both sides. I had a, you know, my daughter went through MLDA, and then contractually was obligated to go to Tams. All eight, since she's been there, I'm not going to argue the fact that both schools can't provide a quality education. I mean, I'm a Kennybunk graduate, so the proof is in the pudding, I guess. And now, my son, I was nervous when it first came around, that I possibly would have a student in each district, and I felt as if it was going to divide my family, like, oh, all right, well, sporting events, my wife's going to have to go one way with my daughter, or I'm going to have to go one way with my son. But fortunately, the RSU and Thornton, most of the RSU worked together, and grandfathered my son, who'll actually be the last class to go through Tams. So I, I mean, I'll have both my kids in one district. And, on a personal level, the transportation was never an issue with me, because my wife works in Sago, so my transportation was provided. But again, going back to that neutral position, from a board member, I wanted to keep it neutral. I wanted to hear, I really, really, really wanted to hear from the petitioners, but it just never, it never came about. I was hoping to get a little more information from them, but I don't know what, I don't know, I just don't think the facts are there, I really don't. And I respect Jack Reed's the most. I don't see how we could possibly argue with Jack Reed's numbers. He's been there every meeting, every budget meeting, every committee budget meeting. And I got to say, it's a no vote for me, on a personal level, to withdraw. I think it's stupid money spent. Jack has made it very clear, and I thank you, Jack, I really do. You put a lot of energy and hard work into it. So it's definitely going to be a no vote for me.
I put four kids through school, they all went to Bedford. I've got nine grandkids, there's some in Kennybunk, some went to Kennybunk, they're not there now, they graduated. I have grandkids at Tams, and everybody come out okay. And I'm going to stay neutral until we find a vote, and then I will support whichever way the vote goes. I'll support it when the time comes.
I kind of wish Diane stayed too, because I'd like to correct the record on a number of things she said, but, and Aaron as well, we don't have 4,000 voters in this town. We've got about 2,280, 3,000. Our population is probably 4,000. And we got a second chance to vote, everybody knows, still can participate in the process. It's not a done deal as far as the budget's concerned. Beyond that too, the selectmen did not mandate consolidation. It was done, our friends in Augusta, and the penalties that were supposed to be imposed, although they were not later enforced, were certainly told to us at that time that they were going to be. So that's why we moved forward as we did. And the selectmen did not encourage, one way or the other, how people were to bug on the first withdrawal. I think the board did not voice an opinion, was aware, or was criticized for. Having said this, I want to quickly move on here, because we've got a lot to do, but when I first saw the withdrawal petition come forward, I got to say, I groaned out loud. Went through the process last time, it was with Diane, not because of Diane, but it was painful. And it was long, it was tedious, let me tell you. Hours and hours of time spent. And then I thought about it, and I said, because I spoke to a number of people who had expressed to me the fact that they felt the first vote was tainted by virtue of either information, disinformation, vague information, whatever it is, because the process was flawed. But I said, well, maybe we ought to do this again, and, as Sean has indicated here, put it to bed forever, hopefully, by going through the process. However, you know, I had to go to law school, because I couldn't do math. Oh, your bills are always right. Somebody else they scared of. But, you know, I just, I did the real simple, I just went back and looked at our budget was back in 2007, 2008, it was over $6 million at that time. I can't believe that we, in this day and age, although the time is fast, it's going to be cheaper for us to run a municipal school unit. It just doesn't make any sense to me, so I want to be supporting the Article III. What's been all these?
Well, I, yeah, I, some people have asked me to comment on it, and when this initially came out, my first, my first reaction was to look at the law, because I didn't have any experience as to what happened before. I heard, I heard staff members tell me, and I think they were doing the growing action as well, because they knew how large a key it was going to be. But, I just strictly tried to look at the $100,000. For me, as an administrator, the numbers weren't adding up. And I looked at the numbers, and looked at what it used to cost and what it was costing us now. It was far cheaper to stay where we are, based on the climate that we're in existence. So, though I was never really asked by the board to provide that information to them, I had a lot of folks that contacted me via email, which I expressed my opinion to them, and an idea of what I thought it was going to be. I think I was pretty close to what Jack has for numbers, but I wasn't as detail-oriented as him. I just looked at some general pictures. So, when I just look at the numbers, it just doesn't make economic sense for this community, in my opinion.
I just want to say thank you for sharing that. I think it was really important.
If there's nothing else, I'll just...
I just make a comment, just, you know, I kind of came up with the same figures that Joan did, as far as, I went to the state Department of Education and took the maximum amounts, and just figuring, and I got the number of students that we have, and if we pay for it on our own, right now, our budget is $4,300,000. And if we did it just counting the state max of 10,000 for the high school, 8,000 for the grade K through 6 through 8, and I plugged in the 8,000 for the same number of kids that we have now, the budget is over $5 million. And that's just taking state max, and then if you look at the tuition rates, the RSU tuition rate for students is, for the K through 8, is $9,400. Dayton Elementary pays $10,600, almost $700. And Acton pays $14,700 per pupil. And this is from the State Department of Education website. So these are not made up, because I, one thing that bothered me at the last public hearing was that everything was thrown out as being speculative, the budgets were speculative. And I have to say that every budget is speculative until it's spent. When we vote on the town meeting board, we vote on what the best-case scenario is going to be for snowstorms, and if we don't get it, we're lucky. Just like last winter, we were lucky the fuel prices went down. My other last comment is about, I keep hearing about, we have a weighted vote. Yeah, Nessa, no. I mean, we have voters, 3,000 voters, and we have three board members. Kennybunk Port is pretty much similar size-wise, as far as the number of voters. Kennybunk has 10,000 voters. So, yeah, they do have more board members, but they have more voters. So, it's more based on, I think, voters than it is the weight of, just, you know, because they have the high school. I think it's, you know, I think people have to stop looking at it that way. They have a larger population, so they do have more representation than we do with a smaller population. And my last statement is, you know, everybody's saying, it's just $45,000 for a study. I don't think it's just 40. The cost of the town is not just the money, as it is the division and the feelings that this would bring out for another six or eight or whatever months to do this negotiation. It's just not worth it to tear the town apart for that. I hope that people will come out and, you know, take advantage of the June 14 vote.
Can I just make one comment?
Yeah.
Just a moment. I just want to say thank you for pointing out about weighted votes, because that's actually state law. I mean, that's how school boards have to be set up, by state law, is your representation on your school board is based on a proportion, it's proportional to the number of voters that you have in your town. So, I just wanted to say thank you for pointing that out, but it's not a conspiracy theory, but it's actually following the law, and each of the towns in a school district, whether it be the Scotty Ginn High School district, where they've got 25 people on board, or it's here, where we have 12, or some places have, you know, only three. It's really just, I mean, that is state law.
And I have to agree with you on participation, because we had 20 Arundel people that attended the open budget meeting. And I have seen a meeting where people got riled up about something, I can't remember what, several years ago, and we had over 100 and something Arundel people. So if the whole entire meeting was 137 voters, if 138 voters got riled up enough and attended that budget meeting, they could change numbers if they wanted to. So people have to be involved, you know.
How do we get this out to the voters now? Obviously, nobody...
Well, Duke's here.
I'm just so shocked at the amount of people that showed up tonight. Is this the last of the...
This will be the final public hearing.
Final public hearing.
When do you think this will go on the interwebs, for people to check out?
Well, I'll give it to Ted tomorrow, he'll get it done tomorrow.
Yeah, we'd like to just be able to share it with people who weren't able to make it, and at least give them that to look at.
Well, for those people that don't have, or have access to it, you're just going to have to go to the library.
And the library.
And a library?
And a library.
In Kennybunk. Seeing nothing else from the public? I'd love to close the public hearing and move on to our regular...
Everybody's going to say, you're going to have to do the pledge allegiance for this. We'll call the regular meeting, order the stuff. I'm just going to hand, Diane's going to object for RSU and their committee board.
I, under due business, I have a bill on some pennywork on the process that needs to be approved by the folks, so I'd like to add that.
You see no changes? That's our approval.
Second.
The vote cleared. Minutes on rocks in public forum. Since they're all gone, um...
Well, I will say one thing for public forum. On Sunday, day before Memorial Day, the Arundel Historical Society, 11 o'clock at the fire station, will have a memorial sort of drive metric. So, if anyone would like to be there, we would love to see you.
Repeat that time, please.
11 o'clock, Sunday morning. Arundel Boys Scout Tiberia, the American Union, Kennybunk Port is going to be there. They're going to do a diaplection on a roll.
You have the phone, uh, phone stuff. I want approval of the late night minutes.
The minutes that I emailed you just this morning, I had done the first one properly. I had forgotten to put your vote, so I had completely, second, the vote didn't put the motion carried in the vote, so I completed that. And I rechecked my figures, and there was a dollar off on monthly, so I picked that up to the phone. It was correctly corrected.
Second. Eight seconds. I have a little bit. Mr. DuBois, RSU.
Well, this was a quick meeting. They started off with the master facilities plan, so if anybody wants to look at it, it's on the RSU 21's website. I guess the biggest thing that come out of this really was that their review showed that they really need to keep the Seaview School open, that they don't have that point for any other school to take those students. But it goes into every single school, you know, student projections, population projections, whatever you, and, you know, that's over on the website, if anybody wants to take a look at that. Master building project updates, obviously, you see what's going on out here, there's a lot of work that's going on out here. Dr. Crowley got up and gave an update on all three projects. This one here is going as planned, it's, you know, the schedule is on budget, and the plan is all on budget. One of the things that he reiterated a couple of times is the work and relations with PC Construction and Harriman, and... and the school board has. Dr. Crowley is one of the members, and I can't remember the name of it, Rudy, Rudy is the other one. They meet every Tuesday from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. and they go through everything. They go through, you know, what's going on, what's happening. And that relationship has been, you know, it's been awesome, it's been very good, and it's worked out very, very well. And there's a lot of good communication going back and forth, and they're very pleased about this.
Yeah, just to add to that, they, they had, RSU has reached out to us. If we would like a presentation at one of our business meetings, they'd be more happy to come in and make a slideshow presentation and discuss the project. So keep that in mind. I know we have a quick meeting on the 6th, and then our next official meeting will be on the 13th. So if you want me to set them up, I certainly can set them up.
And just, you know, to talk a little bit about that. I mean, they're going into some pretty, pretty good plans, detailed plans, on each of the schools, you know, all these timelines. And, you know, there's a ton of information out there on this. And I'm sure Dr. Crowley will be happy as heck to come in and update us. But again, they're doing a pretty good job. So the Kennabunk High School, you know, they're starting to do a work on Fletcher Street and the tennis courts over the consolidation. They had a little over 300 people there for the groundbreaking. Right now, they're working on a temporary parking. And the A Wing Foundation Dig is supposed to start tomorrow. That, consent agenda items, school nurse, Melanie Lacourse. And they nominated her, Step 19, 59,494. There was an approval for a request for a one-year unpaid leave of absence from Megan Bellino, who's a special education teacher at the middle school of the Kennabunks. Executive, and they went into executive session to custodial contract negotiations. Prior to that, we ended the regular meeting at 8:00 p.m. That's it.
Can I make a comment? I was teaching a junior achievement class here in the first grade, and it amazes me, there was one little boy in that class, first grade. He has to see the school nurse after every meal. And I just assumed it was because he has diabetes. And it just amazed me that it's such a big problem in the school. That's why every school has a full-time school nurse.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, it's just a couple of quick things. We received a safety enhancement grant from Public Works Department of $479.99 to buy a set of rolling stairs that were identified in our last safety review by M and M. So hats off to Blodgy for making that happen. We had a pre-bid meeting for the Duckbrook Culvert Project this past Thursday. We had seven vendors show up for the onsite review of the project. They asked some pretty decent questions, but they all had packets, they all had the plans. And I'm hopeful that we get seven bids for people who wanna do it who won't know until our bid opens, which will be on Thursday morning at the fire station this Thursday coming up at 9:00. We're just gonna, we'll all be there a little bit and see what the duck prices is. And then we'll take that over to the buyer and come back to you folks with a little recommendation on which vendors should be looking on it. The RFQ for engineering services for the Route 1 sewer are out to the engineers at this point. We sent them specifically to a variety of them, Red Pierce, Unwood Engineers. Some of them are escaping my thoughts right now. But what we did is we sent the specific ones, then we put them on the other day website, and we did a quick advertisement on them in the hopes that we get a good variety of folks that will be looking at that. We've got a, and I don't have the date of the meeting tonight, I thought I had it on my phone, but it's not there. But this week, I'll send it to you all, this week, we have a question and answer for all the engineering firms. Come in, they talked to us about the project in stone, so if they have any specific questions before they propose this. So again, that will be brought forward, you folks can look at it, and they'll finally decide.
Can I just ask a question? Kennabunk, have they been involved in any of this?
I think. Part of the RFQ is to specifically enter into specific dialogue with the sewer department down there based on what will, what the engineering firm will come up with with analysis of what kind of flaws we're gonna be having that way. And hopefully, we can be part of that whole process. Again, that, it's gonna take a while before we get there. But we left the RFQ up so we could look at both ends of the Route 1 corridor. So we're gonna ask the engineering firms also look at the different end of it to see which way would be the best alternative for us.
I just don't wanna, you know, when we had that meet and greet with everybody, you know, the feeling that I got from the Kennabunk sewer was like, oh, you know, we're not even looking at Arundel at all. I mean, they're going through their process now, and to me, now's the time that they should be at least trying to work with us or us work with them.
I, I think sometimes that, you know, people getting entrenched in processes and how they do things and sometimes change is hard to embrace. I hope that they embrace change and look at some of the things that we'd like to do. And we're not asking for, I don't think the town of Earl's asking for a free ride, but they have their share. So I think that all will come out in some sort of discussion. And obviously, the, I just wanted to include the Arrow newsletter is out. And everybody meets the looks of the lady over there, Simone.
Thank you.
You get all this together and you get that material out. And, you know, my congratulations to her. That's all I have right now.
Alright, let's roll right into bill of sale signing.
Yes, if you recall, we, we had done this whole, whole month as a quick clean D. And obviously, we were in era. And so we put together a bill of sale that is ready to pack it. We'd be looking for a motion in second to approve with the board.
I think we are on that, so I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Any more discussion with us? No offense, guys. All's a favor.
We have a couple of applications. The first one we have is an application for a liquor license for civic organization, Living Electric Railroad, Pittsburgh, Oregon.
Sorry, is that?
Yeah. Are looking for a license for the fundraiser, the pumpkin fest in October. They provided all the information, I believe that Simone's reached out to CEO. He's, all set, we'll be reviewing, we have motion second based on that request.
So, as we've done this every year, I think this is one of their annual events. You knew it last year?
Yes, we did. It's alright, I'll second that.
Remain second, any discussion? All's a favor?
And then you want us to print it? No, you can just write in.
The next one is Lucky Rogers is catering a wedding event at 86 Lombard Road for 85 people attending the Christmas flow on mass gathering ordinance. We'd be looking, I think the CEO is also taking a look at this. We'd be looking for approval of catering, catering license for Lucky Rogers.
So they must be taking care of everything, including?
Well, it's a catering permit.
Motion for main, second?
Second.
All's a favor? Probably didn't print.
No, Simone said you don't have to show. I'll take care of it now, I can type it in though, but it's okay.
Next thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is we have a bill from Champion Auto Body for the final work on the paint job for the bus and the undercoating. The bill is for $4,852.69. Once this bill is paid, we will have about $22,679 to take the remaining of the wrecked bus accounting. I would make a reclamation that we ought to undertake a motion to accept this final bill for Champion Auto Body.
And that's been paid from there?
Paid through the bus reserve cap reserve fund.
Which we're putting in five minutes here.
6205? One more.
From your bill.
I should know, went through the process.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion for main, second? All's a favor? Need a motion for payroll favor launch? Need motion for what Davey was about to say? Second, all's a favor?